We are in open session. And I would like to have a moment of silence for the 9/11 tragedy. Thank you. So we are in open session. I want to notify that no votes were taken in executive session. I'll consider a vote to seal the minutes of executive session. Do I have a motion?
I still move.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Can we have another person's second?
Somebody else did it.
Thank you.
All right, we have the consent agenda. Does anyone want to pull anything out here? I do. I'm going to pull out 6.7 personnel appointment of curriculum coach and coordinators for school year 19-20. I will consider a motion to approve the consent agenda without 6.7. I have a motion.
I still move.
I have a second.
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? I see none. I would like to jump down to action item 13.1. I would like to consider discussing a vote to approve memorandum of agreement to the Little Compton School Committee and the Little Compton Teachers Association. Can I get a motion for that?
Show me.
I have a second.
Second.
All right, discussion. Somebody want to discuss this? Tell us why we're doing all this? Go ahead.
Under Attorney Anderson's two-fledged draft of this memorandum agreement, these positions are new. You approved them last year during the budget process. And they will lead us towards excellence. We are on our way. There's a grade three through eight ELA/social Studies Instructional Coach Coordinator, grade three through eight Science Instructional Coach Coordinator, grade three through eight Mathematical Instructional Coach Coordinator, an International Vaca Laureate Coordinator, and an Ecological Oasis Coordinator. We need the MLA because these are not in the current contract. So this MLA is good for this year, ending June 30th.
Further discussion? Questions? Anyone?
I had seen the job description for the Oasis Coordinator, but I had not seen a job description for any of the other positions. Is that something that I missed? Was it circulated anywhere?
It was posted. When we posted the positions, they were publicized.
Publicized on school spring?
On school spring.
Yeah, I don't recall. I remember seeing the Oasis one in my email. I didn't see any other ones. So I think next time that happens, we'd like to be privy to that information in our packet. Would you agree with that, Ed?
I would.
Okay. Any further discussion on this? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed?
I'm opposed. I don't know what I'm voting for. I don't have enough information.
If I may, I did provide when we...
Motion passed, by the way. Go ahead.
I did provide draft job descriptions last January and February mark during the budget process. They were pretty boilerplate, and they were shared with the school committee. I passed it draft, and there was a little discussion around them. They didn't change much at all.
Thank you. All right, going back now to 611. Oh, I'm sorry. If I go back to the consent agenda, which we just approved, does anyone want to know about any of the names that are on there? Did you just name all the appointments, the curriculum coach coordinators? Did you just do that? Did you just do that?
HR. Yes.
Would you like to name those?
Sure. Sure, sure. Consent agenda, any more? Yes. Let's see. All right, six, seven. So for the school year 1920, our curriculum coach coordinators will be Amy McLean will be the Science Coach Coordinator, Gabrielle Sullivan will be the Literacy Coach Coordinator, Kelly Cole will be the International Vaca Laureate Coach Coordinator. And we are also asking Carmen Woodhouse, who is a member of Little Compton Educational Support Personnel Union, to perform the duties of the Oasis Coordinator. However, she will be paid hourly at her regular rate. Her hours allow this, as she is currently under 40 per week.
She's a forfeit teaching assistant, so we've limited that hourly position to 40 hours total.
So we are discussing 6.7 personnel appointment of curriculum coach coordinators for school year 1920, which was taken out of the consent agenda. I consider a motion to approve it. Do I motion?
I still move.
Second.
Second.
Now we can discuss it. We just figured out, should we just told who all the people were? Is there any other discussion on this items?
Forgive me for being a little slow. Confused. But did we not just vote?
No, we had to take, we voted on the MLA.
Yes.
Now we're voting...
Sorry. The contents of the MLA are exactly what we have.
Okay. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed?
I'm opposed.
Okay, we're the one that passes. That takes care of the consent agenda on that, 6.7. Would you like to tell us 6.8, who the fall coaches are?
Yes. Are you asking me? I'm sorry.
I am.
Jason Ford is being recommended for the co-ed South Country Coach Director position for 1920, 2019-2020. Jennifer Shapiro is being recommended for the co-ed Cross Country Coach Director position for 2019-2020.
Thank you. 6.9, Appointment Title I Teachers. Do we have those names?
Yes. Returning this year as our Title I teachers are Suzie Shaw and Deborah Lambert.
610, Appointment of Behavioral Interventionist.
Raymond Markthod is being recommended for this position for 2019-2020 school year.
611, Appointment of a Office Clerk.
We'll give that one to Carol instead.
Everyone wants to know who the office clerk is, right? Because they want to know the newbie is in there.
Yes.
Do we have an unveiling of a name?
Yes, we do.
We do?
We do.
Does everybody know them? Are they local?
Well, we had the opportunity to meet with Kathleen Waterson, who spent nearly a decade as the school secretary at the Clooney School, which was a parochial K through eight school with about the same student population that we have here. And she will be our new office clerk pending, I may add. I received her current background check. She had one every year that she was in her former employment, but she has had many years break in service due to the school closing. That was the only reason that she left. So once we have that, she's available to start.
What's that name again?
Her name is Kathleen Waterson.
Kathleen?
Yes.
Yep.
You should be known as Kathy. Is she? Who knows?
So far, it's been Kathleen.
Kathleen. Okay, thank you.
I'll be comfortable with that.
All right, seven, spot on excellent. Start of school 2019-2020. Principal Whip?
That would be me. I think we got off to an extremely successful school year this year. The two days before, the week before school started, we had our professional development session for teachers in this room. We were treated by the LCEF and the PST to a breakfast spread and talked a little bit about the support that the PST and the LCEF could offer to the staff at Williston Park. Our focus this year, our One School One book is called Culturized by Jimmy Prases. You will get copies of that book before you leave tonight. Really focusing on developing a strong building culture for everybody. We had some really conflagrating discussion about what does it mean, what is the power of our words and how what we say and do with kids really makes a difference every day? And what are the things that we can do to make sure that we're not accepting average? That we're all, every day, we're striving for, I guess. So we had conversations around that. This is probably my 20-plus years as an educator, one of the, one of the smoothest starts of the school year. I believe the one issue that we can work to improve upon would be the transportation issues. But I yet to be able to discuss where transportation has been an issue the first week of school also. As far as kids, you know, very little tears, lots of happy kids the first week of school, lots of happy staff members. So very pleased with the way things are going. And anytime you'd like to come in and go on to your work, please feel free to contact me at office during the round.
Any comments from the committee for Principal Whip? Thank you. Superintendent Report. Update on Building Renovation 8.1.
Yes.
Is this a document that we're going to be referencing now, or is this going to be...
Mr. McNally is on.
We're going to reference this now?
Well, we can.
Because I know, because I know that you're...
We'll be going to the desk.
Because I'm going to go finance report. Is that going to be, is it going to be different than this? You're going to do two things. Okay. Does, we have copies for the audience?
Yes.
We did? No. Do we have it on the board? We don't?
No, it came in late.
Came in late?
Yes.
Well, I mean, it was part of the numbers.
So can we run some copies? We'll table this for a second.
Some future ideas.
So we'll go back to that. So update on transportation. It's a fun one.
Okay.
Want me to start with my email?
It was a very smooth...
No. That was a no.
Opening. Oh, gosh. The transportation issues notwithstanding. And they have been extraordinary this year, I have to say. First student tweaked some of the runs, which threw off a lot of timings. They claimed that it was for expedience and efficiencies and so on and so forth. I did travel one of the routes on Monday afternoon with the location manager, Sherry Del Toro. I followed, we followed bus three because parents seemed to be giving us negative feedback on various types on that bus run. We tweaked the run further yesterday, and it went into effect today. So I'm not a location manager, but I saw some inefficiencies in that route myself. What's difficult about Little Compton, and also being, the superintendent doesn't know the roads, I couldn't quite respond to the parents emailing me until, you know, I followed the route. It was printed out for me, staff of the location manager who followed it all over town. And the issue is the lack of turnaround. There's no place to turn around that bus. And just adding one new kid, new student, far or psychotic point throws literally everything off 10, 15, 20 minutes. This particular route, I lost count how many roads turned into other roads without any sort of signage, you know? So when parents are saying, oh, Lori, it's here, and I, oh, no, I need to, you know. So I did hop in that car on Monday and follow that. And we did tweak it based on parent feedback about safety and so forth. I didn't receive any email or texts today.
There you go.
So I think bus three...
Well, not bus three.
Made it. The next route I will be on is bus five. And I'll have to hop that in the morning with Sherry Del Toro.
Do you want me to reference that now?
Bus five has been notorious for the past week for, it's supposed to pick up the children at 7:29 or so.
7:23.
It's showing up.
7:49, 7:45, 7:48, 7:50, 7:44, and 7:53.
Our PST president is going, that's my kids. So that's the next one. So I'll have to hop, I will say, Sherry Del Toro has been on site here. She has been following buses in the morning. She drove me Monday afternoon and met at the bus yard. I will be sitting on that in her Honda Accord tomorrow likely and looking at bus five. And sometimes it's just a slight tweak.
Thanks, Jonathan. You can just handle it.
Thank you, Jonathan.
I'll take mine back here. Thanks, Jonathan.
When we tweaked bus, the bus three PM route, we had to find a turnaround. We did. That is the issue with a lot of the logistical problems there in Little Compton. There are so many 90-degree turns that are dangerous. There are so many blind spots. There are so many areas you don't want to drop a child off on the opposite side. And I'm getting to know it up close and personal. We had some issues last year, but nothing like them. And it was the tweaking of the routes based on new students and new stops. And there was just sort of a tipping point with PM bus three and AM bus five. We had some kids walking to school, missing the bus. My phone has been busy and my email account as well. I definitely, a fast turnaround generally, unless something goes into stand, which did happen. I did find some of the parent feedback in Stan recently, and I did reach out to some of those families. So working with the bus company, it's not helping us to know that this is happening all over the state with first student. Hopefully by next week, the bus five issue will be fixed. And it might mean taking some of those stops and portioning them elsewhere and...
It looks like it's in the right way. The kids can sleep longer. It's been consistently late.
Right. So why post a 7:29?
Yeah, so maybe it's just as easy as saying it's going to be there.
He's giving you the stink eye over there.
We'll get to it.
We do want source this, Kim. We do want sources.
Any comments by the committee on this transportation? Any one have anything? Good. And how about anybody out there? Kim Cannon?
No. I think it's always a little wonky in the beginning of the year. This year has been worse.
Yes, it has been.
So my kids have been on three different, two different buses, four different assigned pickup times since the beginning of school, and none of it is actually right. So this year we've been, or this week, we've been writing it down, everything. We're hoping to get an average of when the bus was originally coming to get them because it's been varying. But I know people are working on it, so, and we're not the only ones affected. I think it's just been a little bit more bumpy than usual.
The bus yard did send out routes to psychotic times that they were, they were pretty much fiction.
I have just a question. So this morning, I know there was something happened with bus three in the morning. We had a different driver.
Yes.
Different bus. Totally different situation. I'm assuming that was a problem. It would have been nice to know that they were coming 20 minutes late, just because we had, like, whatever. We were out there for 25 minutes. We get out there early. You guys sent texts about a lot of different stuff. If there's a way to maybe alert?
I wasn't aware of that till afterwards. I do know what happened was the driver and the monitor do an early morning block off of Pacific Island kids to the Career Academy in Bristol Warren. And so the kiddos were never picked up at the, we drive them. Okay, so first student drives them to a site, and the Career Academy brings them over to Bristol Warren. The van from Bristol Warren never came to pick up the children.
Obviously, they couldn't. I wouldn't want my child left anywhere.
And so Lorraine, I know Lorraine and Beth...
Just like a little notice would have been.
Lorraine and Beth were tied up there supervising children who were never picked up by the van from East Bay Educational Career Academy. So I was told that they did text the school, and the school did not push out that text. That was an extraordinary circumstance. Once again, it happened within the first few weeks of school.
It's, it's happened. It's not...
So two strangers. So you had the location manager, and you had the new dispatcher. So they left the bus yard unmanned, unmanned, and they took over bus three. Actually, it was another bus, but I didn't find that out until late this morning.
All right.
I will ensure that the school pushes out information in a timely manner.
Thank you. I'm going to go back to, I'm going to go to 8.3, then I'll go back to 8.1, John. 8.3, Update on District Opening of School 2019-20, 2019 to 2020.
I think it was a really good opening. Like I said, the transportation notwithstanding. We had an orientation day for all of our staff. Thank you so much. PST came, LCEF came, and they talked to our school teachers about ways that they could support them. We rolled out our employee assistance program that is comprehensive, economical, and game-changing. We also had someone from the State Retirement Board come down, and that was June Dunn's idea. We had wonderful presentations. We had fantastic discussions of this book. And Ms. Whip and I, we had two different groups going on, two different, two different areas of the building, and we shared facilitating those discussions. And I was just absolutely blown away by the level of engagement. Our teachers definitely did their summer reading. It was wonderful to engage in conversations about being student-centric with all of our staff. Our children came in beaming, some of them late because of the busing. We have changes in the cafeteria. We now have a salad option every day. It was only on Fridays in the past, and now it's five days a week. And today it was tossed salad with different ones, and tomatoes and carrots. Our new staff just hit the ground running. I cannot thank the interview teams enough. I know I did that this summer, but I might give them just a lot of praise for the wonderful hires that brought so much, so much energy to our opening. New music teacher, new math teacher, two new math teachers, T director, Jonathan. So parents seem to be pretty pleased with the opening, except for those parents generally on bus three, four, and five. They've been waiting for their kiddos. So Ms. Whip was absolutely super organized. Our scheduling, as you know, was automated for the first time in the history of the district. And our logistical dashboard, our logistics dashboard is now populated. We're still updating all of that on every single student, whether he or she is in the morning, in the afternoon. And it's ready reference for any teacher, no longer hard copies in binders.
All right, so I just have one quick. On the opening of school, and you can tell me if I'm legally wrong or administratively right or wrong. What was new to me was the nut-free school in classroom. So my understanding, and let me know if I'm right here or wrong, is that this school is a nut-free school in the classroom.
Mm-hmm.
Okay? We're not nut-free in the cafeteria because we have a nut-free table. And my understanding is that that decision is made by administration. It's not made by the school committee. It's not made by parents. It's not made by the lawyer. It's not made by RIDE or the state of Rhode Island. It's strictly the call of the administrator, and it may change year to year. Because this year, we have 17 kids that have an issue. No names here.
That's anonymized.
No names. So there's 17 kids that have sensitivity to peanuts and cashews or whatever it is. And you make that decision. Am I right? Or is that correct?
Correct.
Correct.
And we did make that decision as a team, Ms. Dunn, Principal Whip and I, we did decide.
So my, the reason I bring it up is I would imagine that our parents would need to know this before the day before school. So I think there's, I don't think they should be known in June because they're going to forget. But at some point, they need to know maybe three weeks before or whatever. You guys decide, I think would be...
That's absolutely true.
Yeah. Any other questions on update or district opening of the school? Thank you. All right, John, you got that memorized over there now?
We have an update on the building project. We put the project out for competitive bidding, I believe it was the beginning of August. By state procurement statutes, it stays out for 10 business days. We had a pre-bid meeting. We had three contractors that showed some interest. Two contractors actually showed up at the pre-bid conference. And bids were due on, I believe that August 27th, which is that Wednesday. And because a lot of them were finishing up summer projects, we had gotten a request to delay it another week. So it would be the week, the Wednesday after Labor Day, when the bids were due. So at the bid opening, there was just one vendor that offered in, and that was a company called Montel, a service company located in Narragansett, Rhode Island. The bids were, the bid was publicly opened. We had representatives from RGB there as well. They took the bid, analyzed it, made sure they were compliant with all the requirements of the bid. They did appropriately for the schematic designs that they were looking at. And in that bid process, there were three major components, which we were calling the base bid. The first one was for the gymnasium. The second one was for the, excuse me, the first one was for the office renovations, the hotening of the front entrance. The second one was for the gymnasium work. And the third one was for video surveillance and other security improvements here at the school. So the total of those base bids came out to $565,590. If you recall, we had gotten approval for this project at $499,999 from RIDE. Approval number from RIDE is just the amount that RIDE will reimburse us for. So our reimbursement rate, our base reimbursement rate is 35%, but since we're doing security upgrades, we think we've got a 5% incentive. So we think we're going to be at 40% in terms of our housing aid reimbursement on that. And on the $499, we have to back off the two grants that we're getting, which is the Van Buren grant and the Red Island Foundation grant. So the net of those two times the 40%, is what our reimbursement would be from RIDE, and that's approximately $176,000. So you can see that we're fully over budget at this point in time because I haven't even added in my soft costs from the architects, which are approximately $48,000. So RGB went through the bids and late this afternoon, sent me their report, which are recommending that we accept the base bids for the office renovations, the gymnasium, and the video surveillance, so for the $565,590. There were eight different alternatives that were bid on. And what happens in these, we were hoping that we have money left over so we can get these alternatives, but oftentimes, we don't. So they went through the alternatives, and they picked the two, which was the ballistic glazing on the interior door side light, that was about $3,400, and the Level One ballistic glazing for the interior lobby, which was $87,45. They also selected the prefab office furniture, and that alternate was somewhere in the neighborhood of $36,225, which I think we all agreed was a little high. So what I've done is I've taken that out, and we'll be looking at trying to finance that probably through the operating budget at this point in time, and are working on trying to reduce some of these numbers now. That process is still going to continue as we work through this project. So we're going to be working with RGB and the contractor as well to reduce some of these numbers as we get into the project. But on the... But on the outset, we were gonna look at two credits, which are included in the base bids right now. So, there's a sixty thousand dollars for a repeater that was included in the base bid, and that repeater was going to improve the communications here at the school. I think with some of the changes that we've made with the eighteen-team net that we've done, we don't think in R G B is an agreement that we really need to spend sixty thousand. And I think there was some question at the security committee meeting as to whether we needed that as well, too. So, that was in the base bid. We pulled that out. There's also a credit in there, forty-four, nine forty, for camera equipment. So, what we wanted to do was get all the infrastructure in so we could get the cameras in place. Now, that infrastructure would be reimbursed by RIDE. Equipment will not be reimbursed on the housing aid by RIDE, so we're not gonna get forty percent of that credit. So, we pull those cameras out, thinking that we either look at another means of financing for those cameras, whether we do a five-year lease, or whether we look at next year's budget and include that number in that budget. So, at the end of the day, that's gonna bring the total proceeds, or the total cost of this project, including the soft costs, at just a little under five hundred and twenty-one thousand dollars. And right now, our total financing with the grants, with the RIDE reimbursement, with the monies that we've set aside in our capital reserve, comes to about five hundred and twenty-two thousand. So, we're looking at about a two-thousand-dollar spread at this point in time. Now, there was, there was one other alternate that I was hoping that we could get, and I know that in other districts we have done this, which would have been the film on the windows. And that, that cost was thirty-three thousand, six sixty for that film. That's something certainly we can do after the fact. It's clearly something we can put into next year's budget. We put a capital budget together, we can include that in there. So, some of these alternates that we're rejecting at this point in time, we do have the ability to look at that as for next year or even ideas down the road. We are gonna be putting together a five-year building plan. We got the money from RIDE, technical assistance money to help us put that plan together. So, whatever we might be rejecting here, we certainly will be including in that five-year plan that we're putting together. So, overall, because oftentimes these budget projections come well over what we have for the total budget, so I consider this to be in pretty good shape at this point in time. And we're gonna continue to work with the contractor and with R G B to get these numbers down as best we can as we go through it.
Questions from the committee? Anyone out there? Mike?
John, I got a question for you. This number that you're saying credit for the camera, forty-four, nine forty, I'll take the top of the base bid, it says one fifty-seven, four hundred. So, the difference is, what, the infrastructure portion? A hundred and twelve?
Yeah, Mike, I think the repeater was also in that six, two. So, it's a hundred and four that comes out of that fifty-seven, and the balance of that would be the infrastructure, the wiring, the switches, that kind of thing for the cameras.
So, basically what you're saying is you want to put all the hog wire in, but no cameras?
Well, the cameras are not reimbursable from RIDE, but it's gonna be a little easier for us to put those cameras in, and we still can talk about a means of financing those cameras so that we could get them in. I've just gotta see how this year is gonna pan out in terms of the operating budget. And if we could do it, if we do it over the five-year lease, you know, we might be talking about, you know, a ten or twelve-thousand-dollar kick on an annual basis to the operating budget. We might be able to, and then this year, if we did it halfway through the year, it would only be six thousand, so we may be able to do that. But then obviously, we have to get going forward for that for the next four-plus years, so... Or we could put it into our capital budget and try to sell it to the budget board and make sure that it's a thousand, thousand.
The infrastructure is reimbursable, forty-seven thousand dollars, and the equipment isn't? Can you get to term an issue?
Any questions on this?
All the payment approval.
Sorry. Any other questions on this document?
I have one.
Go ahead.
Question. I'm just maybe looking for some reassurances because in any construction project, we can run out of funding. We are in Rhode Island. So, I just wanna know anybody's experience with Martel Service Company? Anything personally you can add about?
I know that R G B has worked with them, and they had indicated that they were on budget and on time with the, with the project, so I felt pretty comfortable. I have not personally worked with them. The project is not a big project, so as far as putting a contingency in there, I think that the contractor kinda has dealt with all those issues. So, I don't think we're looking at any surprises.
We just have a tight timeline. We have got to get the work done to get the reimbursement, so.
Right, and I think we'll have some flexibility. What's gonna happen now is we'll get the contract signed, have these design documents prepared, they'll have the wall materials. The demo's not gonna take very long. It's really the time is gonna be getting the materials in, like the, they're saying it's about twelve weeks lead time on the ballistic glass, so that's why we need to, you know, make those decisions now on the glass and get those things ordered, so that's what R G B is gonna be working with the contractor on.
So, John, you're up again. Finance report.
You need to take a bow.
That's... That's down at the action. Number nine, finance report.
So, this is gonna be the final report. The auditors are gonna be coming in sometime in October, but these numbers are pretty much complete. So, we're looking at from operations, a deficit of about forty-three thousand, and this is prior to the transfer of forty thousand into the capital reserve. That's gonna wind up leaving us with just a little over ten thousand accumulated surplus in our general fund. So, that's a number we're gonna have to kinda look at as we move into next year's budget because I think it's a little thin, especially when you have issues in terms of out-of-district placements and tuition. You never know what, you know, what those numbers are gonna be, and so I feel more comfortable having a little bit more in the reserves. So, we're gonna work on that as we move into the FY twenty-year, but also as we get the FY twenty-one budget together. So, there hasn't been really any material changes from the reports I've been giving in terms of any year-end surprises at this point in time, so this will close out the FY nineteen year.
Questions? Thank you, John. Committee reports. Call to school committee, Rita?
Yes. Quite busy.
Busy over there?
Yes.
They took a month off, didn't they?
But then they've been at it. We've had two meetings in the last month. So, a couple of things I wanted to point out which seemed of interest to me. One is the dress code policy, and the reason this is really interesting to me is that they wanted to make some changes to the dress code, but they wanted community input, so they used something called thoughtexchange.com. Are you familiar with it? So, you know, okay, it's a, it's a, it's a community intelligence platform for leaders. So, it's something they use to get feedback from the community and real precise input, just...
It's like a, it's like a step above Facebook?
You did it. Did you? Oh, yeah, okay.
And it was interesting, we see people's comments. Some people commented they had no idea there was no dress code. Some people were stricter, we want uniforms. Yeah, parents or whoever was commenting, they're all looking.
Yeah.
And then you could read their comments, so, you know, we want uniforms. I could read it on that one.
Yeah, yeah, it was really informative for the decision-making and the policy for the policy committee, so I just thought I'd throw that out there. For huge use, yeah. Their field trip policy, and we know that we're discussing, or we need to...
Yes.
Okay, so, we'll all add to the conversation when we talk about field trips. And the dedication for the renovated auditorium is September twenty-fourth.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, next is town recreation committee. Yesterday, the state of Rhode Island D E M released five-million-dollar grants for recreation. So, the recreation committee will be meeting nine-twenty-three to discuss any strategies if we're going to go for some grants. So, that's coming up fairly quickly. Health and wellness?
Yeah, we don't have our first meeting until October third, but the box program, which is the pre, before-school physical activity team-building program, is taking off on September twenty-fourth, and we have four parents who have volunteered to implement this program, which is really wonderful. And they're trained and ready to go, and we'll have information at the open house available to parents. They can register online, and there will be room for forty kids between K and three. Yeah, and then forty of the older kids, so we're hoping we fill it.
Thank you, Jenna. The oasis committee? Do we have the report from our administration on the oasis? Policy, I'm sorry. I'm sorry, not oasis. Hold that thought. Policy, do we need to talk about it, or are we gonna do it down below?
We do, we do, down below.
Okay. Oasis?
I'll speak for Jeremy. That one, we had two groups of volunteers working the oasis this summer. I participated in one of them, and I learned a lot, being the city girl that I am generally. And we are ready for this year with an oasis coordinator, a garden mentor from the URI's master gardener program, and two staff members who are certified master gardeners. So, we are excited.
So, my...
Lori, the Rhode Island Coalition of Healthy Schools is offering a workshop for school gardens. It's on their website, so might be something worth looking at.
We have vegetables, we have potatoes, we eat tomatoes when we're pruning and getting invasive weeds, like Jeremy, and a lot of that one's there.
So, my understanding of Carla Woodhouse is gonna be the oasis coordinator? So, my understanding is that she is gonna take her training and bring it back to the teachers and educate them on how to, give them ideas about having their class go into the oasis and teach them in a curriculum-type setting. And then she also gets ideas from this master gardener from URI that's kinda like her mentor that gives her some ideas. Is that how this all works together?
Yeah, as master gardeners, they have access to a huge database of curriculum materials across the content areas, so she can facilitate and offer access. She, we have two raised beds there right now, and cutting garden, it's the oasis, it's really...
Any other comment? Ed, I know you're involved.
Only nominally. I haven't shown up to weed for a while.
We're not holding that.
It's always there. The weeds are always there.
They're always there.
All right, next is school safety subcommittee report. We'll be meeting soon as we get closer with the R G B and the contractor. Discussion items eleven, update on Portland High School policies and procedures discussed with Superintendent Riley. So, we had three points of clarification that we charged the superintendent with. I had one, and Paula's gonna read the other two. The first one, Superintendent Mitchell, was if a child has an issue with a coach, a team, student, teacher, or staff, are they going, is P H S going to notify their guidance counselor and a psychologist if needed, and the parent right away? And I still haven't got a concrete answer to that.
I do have a concrete answer. However, you know, the circumstances are so, are so varied when it comes to kids' crisis and behavioral issues. But if a teacher has several minor behavioral issues, it's expected with the new protocols in Portsmouth with their new M T S S, that multi-tiered system of support, teacher contact the parent before it is escalated to the assistant principal. That's always been an expectation of the administration, that teachers reach out first to the parents before it gets to the assistant principal, or the teacher, or principal's office. That's always been an expectation and a mandate. In cases involving suspension of behavior plans, the guidance counselor is included for reentry purposes. In all drug-related cases, the student assistance counselor is moved in for support. The psychologist and the social worker are also providing counseling services for those students of behavior problems, but also have significant psychological or home issues. In nearly all cases, parents are notified if there's a major discipline issue, small behavioral issues, milk carton explosion, I won't give them many ideas. Boystrust, boystrust's, boystrust behavior hallways, that's where students take responsibility and the new restorative practices framework comes into play. But Superintendent Riley was very forthcoming, and these new protocols expect teachers to reach out to parents at point of need.
So, I hear you speaking, and I see that the teacher needs to reach out first. So, that, okay, I understand that. And then if there's a suspension, everybody knows, or everyone's, and a major, major disciplinary issue. I still haven't heard if there's a problem with a coach, a team, the staff, or another student?
The new protocols do require staff to reach out to parents.
Okay, so I'll cross out staff. How about coach, team, or other student?
All of it. Well, other student, that's different. That could be where...
All right, I'll cross off other student. I don't wanna get in the weeds with that.
Why? Because you could have some pure modeling and...
Coach or team?
Yes.
That's, that language is in there? Coach, team?
School staff.
So, school staff is considered coach, team?
Which includes coaches and anyone who's...
So, is there anything specific that says if I'm having a problem with a coach, this is what, this is the protocol?
The staff themselves, they, they have been trained in the new protocols.
And that includes coaches?
Right, and kids have been apprised of this through their specialists, their counselors, and other S D L supports them.
So, the, so the coach has been trained in this now, like you're saying, where, and he has a problem with a, with a kid, or sees a problem with a kid, where does he go? Who does he tell?
Depends on what the issue is. If it's a behavioral issue, then the parent needs to be notified as the superintendent on Riley stated. If it's an issue with a teammate, or it's an issue, a hardship for buying equipment, it could be all different issues. But anything where there's a behavioral problem, that coach is expected to reach out to the parent at point of need.
That answers my question so far. Thank you. Do you have two other ones that we needed some more clarification?
What policies were changed and what were the changes?
Just about the entire M T S S system was changed and systematized across the building. As I stated in August, a social, an M T S S coordinator for the first time in the history of Portsmouth, that position was created and staffed with one of the existing principals who applied for it, and she was awarded that position. The portal is up, and so a lot of information is there. So, every single policy and protocol was examined and tweaked. They always had a system in place, as all districts do, but there was never a district-wide coordinator. There were, if you go to the portal, you will see the building-level teams, the M T S S teams, the multi-tiered system of support, those teams, the pictures are there. And so, there's full transparency, the staff members are photographed, and certain pieces of the policy and protocols are there.
So, I know, like, if you came to our policy committee and said, oh, I see you changed the list service policy. Could you show me what it was before and what it is now? I know that Ed and I could go through the boxes of paperwork and show you the process that we took, and what the old policy looked like, and what the new policy looks like.
Some of them are building practices and protocols more than policies.
So, my other question that's related and was Steve's...
So, my other question that's related and was Steve's question was, were students involved in these policy changes?
As I suggested, but I didn't know for sure usually because I worked several years on the high school level. Student councils and so forth are generally highly involved in everything that has to do with school culture. So, high school mental health staff in Portsmouth did meet with various groups of students. They collected data and feedback to the support, the high school health staff, mental health staff. They also had a group of students who met with Governor Gina Raimondo on the topic of social-emotional learning and how the state could help. The student council, as I mentioned in August, is spearheading the work with the Sandy Hook Promise. Folks, they're just like we implemented Choose Love from the Sandy Hook tragedy, and they're rolling out their See Something, Say Something app this fall. So, they actually have an app that they're pushing out.
So, the answer is no?
Students were involved.
So, they weren't involved in the actual policy change at District Hall?
They absolutely were in that their views, their feedback was collected by mental health staff, and all of that informed the new processes and protocols. So, what I would love to do at the October meeting is look at their portal and go through it. They just rolled it out because they're a month or so late, and I think that would definitely allay the fears of our families if they see it, if they read it. And it's pretty fully populated at this point. It wasn't by August 1st. It is now. It's quite good, and that will answer a lot of the questions. And it's all a work in progress. No one has ever done, in terms of a multi-tiered system of support for academic, social, emotional needs. No school, no school department has ever finished without one.
Questions from the Committee?
I would just like to add that while kids' input was taken indirectly, I don't-
They met with them, with the, you know, with that request.
So, this was Steve's question, and I know that he does a lot of mentoring of the ESI kids. And I don't want to speak for you, but I would assume that you would not consider the information gathered from your kids as part of them being part of the policy change?
I didn't hear anything about anything that they got. And we have 63 high school students in every student initiative. One of our people is the vice president of the 2020 class for the school committee. He wasn't spoken to about anything to do with policy. I do know that the mental health staff there-
It did, yes.
They put out a survey. It was a three-question survey on approval survey back, and they got 20 kids to respond to it, which was 900. So, I don't know if that was the survey or data collection that they spoke about. So, I didn't hear anything. We weren't involved in any way, or any of those students weren't involved in that way. One of our students was at the Governor Raimondo meeting. She came after one of our students wrote an essay, and that got her deported, but unfortunately, she wanted to meet with ESI, but she ended up meeting with one ESI member and other students who had great stories, and it didn't make a lot of sense then. There was nothing talked about policy about.
So, Steve, what did you think would have been appropriate that PHS should have done with the students and their input?
Well, I think legally, the boards, the school committee boards are obligated to have the student input in policies and helpings on those committees. At least enforcement for the policy says that they should have students helping on this structure, which Portsmouth, I don't think, has had in the last 10 years or so. So, just a lot of connectedness, because you look at all the issues that we face with mental health crisis that we're facing, suicide epidemic among teens that's getting worse and worse each year, substance abuse. And the one, the strongest risk factor or protective factor to get away from all those things is connectedness. Connectedness with your school, connectedness with your community. So, the more that these students sort of felt empowered, that they're actually making a change here, that their words actually matter, and that they have a say on what's going on with the policies and with their school, that would connect with them right there. And that would go along with mine from them to actually follow through on.
Yeah, I agree.
I will share this feedback with Superintendent Riley.
Have you shared that with their school committee?
We haven't been in front of them, because like you said, they took, well, it was pretty much a two-month break. So, they've been doing a lot of stuff in their two meetings that they have had, so we haven't really had a chance to be on their agenda or talk to them yet.
John, can you speak in the legality of, I know you're not privy to their policies in Portsmouth, but if they have such a policy, like Steve's saying, that they have to have students on their wellness committee?
I have not looked at their policies. There's no legal requirement, in the sense from the General Assembly, if they, or the Department of Education, if they choose as a school committee to have students involved, that's a school committee decision in Portsmouth, but it's not required by state law or by Department of Education regulations.
Superintendent Riley did say the high school mental health staff met with various groups of students. So, there's no reason to believe otherwise, but I will follow up with the information that we did share.
Ken?
Do you know how to get to this portal? I was just looking at the website, and I'm not easily finding it here, but I think it's on a left of the MTSS, the multi-tiered system of support. Click that.
Polly's on it, right? No, well, Polly's trying to navigate it now.
Yeah, it doesn't jump out at you.
There it is.
I'll send you one.
Yeah.
Okay. I think it looks different on the-
Maybe. Yeah.
Any other questions on that one?
Yeah, it's-
Thank you. 11-2, appointment of Portland High School contract negotiation Subcommittee. We're going to name a Subcommittee. We're going to start entering into negotiations with Portland High School with hopes of another contract with them. I will be on the committee. Janet Porter will be on the committee. Lori Daz Mitchell, Turney Anderson, John McNamee, Jill Quinn, and Carolyn Sedgwick. All right, 12, public input. Anyone who would like to say anything on the record? Now is the time.
I just got a question, please, about 6:11. Was that a flagrant to replace somebody, or is that in addition to a new person?
That's a good one. It's an easy one. Who wants that one? You?
Is that the office clerk?
Yeah.
Yes. That is the position of support in the front office in the afternoons. It was held last year by Mrs. Morgan, who has shifted into another position, thus vacating that one.
But we can put anyone else. Thank you. 13, action items. We've already did 13.1. 13.2. Consider discussing vote to approve the 2027 grade trip to Philadelphia. I will consider a motion to approve. Do I have one? Do I have a second?
Second.
It's up for discussion. So, shall we wrap this up into the policy 2? All right? Or Polly, you can, you have to speak about this, Ed?
About the particulars. We don't have the field trip policy for a first read on this agenda, so I don't, I'm... All right, we don't have the policy.
I have something to say, though. I can do the policy.
You can say, does anyone want to discuss this, talk about this, or no?
Wonderful trip, I think, for organizing a teaching.
Okay, go ahead, Polly.
So, I'm just going to say, I'm not sure I feel totally comfortable approving another lodge trip with our Helping Hands Fund and our donation field trip change wording. I feel like we might be fighting off more than we can chew. We haven't been through a school year and seen what happened, so I'm just not really comfortable going for it. I'm not really against the field trip or anything. I just think it could cause issues that we don't know.
So, can I just say how I see it? And then you can tell me if I'm right or wrong. So, the ride's outgoing director said that parents don't have to pay for field trips, right? So, this committee voted to ignore that recommendation, and parents are going to pay for their field trips, just like they have for 50 years here. It's going to be the same way. And there's also this account where if someone is in need of money to go on a trip, they can tap into that. So, everything's the same as it's always been here, and will continue that way. So, how, so what's the issue? Let me see.
So, we're asking for donations now, not requiring payment. And I feel like the policy was publicized quite a bit, and there are families that might possibly say, "I'm not going to, hey, I'm not going to make a donation," and-
So, my thought would be if you can't afford it, then you would ask to help, and we have a fund for that.
Small fund.
Small fund, and if you don't, just like every other year we've been here, you're going to pay your money to send your kid on the trip. That's my understanding.
Right, so we have the Washington DC trip, and if we approve this, we'll have the Philadelphia trip. So, say half of the parents decide not to make the donation for both trips.
So, Polly, is your concern that the change in the wording is going to result in parents not wanting to-
The change in the wording and the publicity of, around that, that it's, it's gone. I feel like we don't know. It's an unknown, and we could be setting ourselves up for-
Have we heard anything from parents? Do we indicate that?
I think it's early yet.
Yeah.
And the worst-case scenario is we cancel a trip. We hope that, we hope that doesn't come to fruition at all, but it's a civil rights issue, it's an access issue, so we have to offer the opportunity to every child regardless of their ability to pay.
Other discussion?
Worst-case scenario is we cancel.
Any other discussion? Anyone in the audience? Roger Ward?
Will there be any kind of a means testing for people that are claiming they can't afford it? I hate to speak negative, but people sometimes do things like that.
I don't, if you're asking me an opinion, my opinion, no. But what do I know? Yeah.
I can imagine that that would happen, and just knowing if we're moving.
Yeah, I just, I would hope that this committee would not turn down the opportunity for these kids that want a field trip or this event. Yes, it's been an exercise for many years for many other classes, but these kids should not be wrapped out of this opportunity to be able to experience this that other classes have. It's always been a workaround. If somebody needs money, it's always been taken care of, and it's always been down, down on the lowdown, and that has worked, so it's not broken unless it's not priced up.
So, I agree to a certain point. The Philly trip is fairly new. It's not like this, you know, tradition-
50 years, like I said?
No, I think it's not, not-
Fact-checking me here?
Not all of my kids even went on it. I think only two did. And I do think it's a great trip, but, and before, we have, had to require a payment from those parents. Now, we don't have to. I don't know, I just, I just think two big trips in one year without having gone through a trial year could be dangerous.
You know, I don't know. Now, we don't have to. Who says we don't have to? Is it some outgoing ride director? We voted to disregard that.
We voted to change our field trip forms to say that we take, that it was a donation by donation.
Great. Ken?
So, I know you said you had, it's early, and you haven't heard a lot of feedback from the parents, but eighth grade, so they at least have been fundraising already and talking about it, and still haven't heard any feedback there, parents, you know, coming forward and saying?
I do think we're a little bit behind the mark with the amount of money that we typically have collected by this time of the year. We're just beginning to get into our school year, meeting with parents and whatnot, but we definitely, we have a little bit less money than we typically would have by this point.
But you have our parents raising their hand and saying, "I heard about this, and are we going to change our fee structure with the eighth-grade trip, or any questions about it?"
So, it's still early. We're catastrophizing a little bit because it's less money than in past years. We met this morning about it. We're hoping, you know, with this more information pushed out to parents.
Is the payment schedule for both of the trips the same? Like, will you be asking for money at the same time for both, and then suddenly might find out that a bunch of people are raising their hands at once, or are they staggered?
Can I just ask you something, Paul? The funds are actually direct in two different ways. One is fundraising for the eighth grade, and one is directly paid by the parents for seventh grade. So, we have, so funds through the eighth grade are being done over the course of the year, up through December particularly, and then the seventh grade is done directly through payments made through the parents.
Yeah. I just think to Polly's point, there's two big trips at the same time, and so that sort of would fall into the same, like, asking her to help the hands fund even though they're raised differently, but I think that was what it did.
Both in the spring. Yes, if we can, you know, a lot of requests for assistance will run out really quickly. Developed an online form that will get pushed out to families that need support, that goes only to myself and Mrs. Moore. That will be going out with communication that goes out regarding trips in the near future and available on our website in a bunch of different ways that parents can access that. Just to put it in context, for the DC trip, we're talking approximately $600 a student, and for Philadelphia, it's about $400 per student. There's a whole fundraising schedule, which is true.
Further discussion? Anyone else?
Well, just to keep it, again, in perspective, so Portsmouth is very concerned about the field trip policy because it's a bigger school system, the high school goes on many trips. So, they're very concerned, and they are going to reach out to our legislators to try and change the law so that it be like something more reasonable. But they also are protesting this.
Protest. Good. Further discussions?
I'm sorry, just one thing. Just keep this in mind, that these trips are booked a year in advance, so if you guys decide not to approve this, that you can't come back in another month and think that you're going to still be able to get the same trip and everything that's been planned already through the program.
Thank you. Thank you. All right, so I have a motion, I have a second. Let's go roll call, Carolyn, since you're, let's do it, roll call. Roll it out, roll.
All right, Mr. Bowen made a motion to approve the 2027 grade trip to Philadelphia. It was seconded by Ms. Henahan. By roll call, Ms. Porter?
Aye.
Mr. Bowen?
Aye.
Mrs. Allen?
Aye.
Ms. Henahan?
Aye.
Mr. McHugh?
Aye.
So, pass is four to one. Thank you. So, 13-3, consider discussing vote on a naloxone-
naloxone.
Naaloxone policy. Edward?
The, we brought into agreement, the Rhode Island Department of Health requires that we have a four-milligram dose rather than what is the two-milligram dose that they had required. So, we brought that provision into alignment with that requirement, and we deleted one, at least a portion of one paragraph. The only people who appear to be qualified to administer the doses are nurse educators. And then there is a paragraph that allowed for training of other school employees to administer the dose, but since they're not allowed to administer the dose, we just struck the paragraph. So, that's all we did to that.
So, it's a first read, no vote, no motion. Any comments? Thank you. Ed?
Roger.
Roger.
Just education. What is that substance?
Naloxone. It is an opiate, what was the term?
Antagonist.
I'm sorry? Antagonist?
So, it will, when you're giving naloxone during an overdose, an opioid overdose, it kicks the opioids off your brain sectors and allows you to hopefully recover from an overdose.
13-4, consider discussing vote to approve bid for Martin Service Company LLC for front office reconfiguration and any of these improvements. Another motion? So moved. Second? Discussion? Anyone?
My only question is whether or not we would be able to amend it to bring it down to the 499 figure or whether or not we're required to accept it as the bid is presently configured.
Well, we're going to continue to work on it, so we're going to get it within the framework of the presentation that I gave you, which would be like 500 and change to get everything complete. So that would be the amount of funds that we would have available for that, so...
Any other discussion on the committee? All in favor? Aye. Any votes? Not seeing any that passes unanimously. Thirteen-five, consider discuss a vote to approve any request for information administration or legal counsel. Anyone? Not seeing any? I guess it's in a vote to adjourn. Second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Thank you. Thank you.